Commissioner Smith, you want to give us a prayer and invocation?
Let us pray. Our Father, we once more again that we come before your presence in the humblest manner that we know how, first of all, say thank you for what you've already done in our lives and for what you're doing right now. We ask him, my Father, as we protect this budget meeting this evening, that you will lead us, guide us, and direct us in the way that you have us to go, that all that we shall say and do will be pleasing and acceptable in your sight, our Father, that all the decisions you would make will be in the best interest of the citizens of Apocca. Bless now this mayor, this council, and those that are in attendance and those that are watching. We pray in thy son Jesus' name, amen.
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 I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, well, since there's nobody from the public here to speak, Edward, we're, you ready to take over?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. So this is our final budget hearing for, to set the millage rate, the final millage rate, and adopt a final budget for fiscal year 2020, 2021. So again, I'll go just, and for the, for the ones that are, for the people that are viewing, the citizens that are viewing and people that are watching, I'll go quickly through. A lot of this presentation is similar to the presentation you saw at the first budget hearing. There are some changes at the end of the presentation that we'll talk about based on the direction that, that I received from, from the council. So we'll talk about the budget process again really quick for those who, who are maybe new tonight listening. We'll go over the budget highlights that are in this budget, the infrastructure improvements, major capital items, substantial items that we have excluded or that were excluded during this budget process, an overview, I'll do an overview at the end, and then we'll have time for questions and comments and direction. So the budget process, where we've started, we have a calendar that we have to follow that is based on state statutes called the TRIM process, Truth and Millage is what it stands for. It typically begins in March or April. Estimated taxable values are received from the property praiser on June the first. We have meetings with each one of the departments. So we've been through this whole process. We started way back in March and April when we've met with all the departments for their needs and concerns for our, as we prepare our 2021 budget. On July 1st, we receive the certified taxable values from the property praiser. These are the values that we use that, that we apply the millage rate against to set our property taxes. The public workshops, we had public workshops on the 13th, the 14th, and the 15th with the city council and the citizens. That was also televised, and that's where we went over all of the line item details with every department and every budget through, through, through all of the funds. The proposed budget was submitted to the city council. The city council set the proposed millage rate and the proposed budget. We had a first public hearing on September the 9th at 5:15 here in the council chambers. And so tonight, we are the final process, the final stage. We are at the, the final public hearing where we will set the final, we have to set the final millage rate in the budget. This was advertised in the Orlando Sentinel based on the TRIM requirements. So all the advertisement has been met and has been approved. So we will, this, this budget will begin on October 1, 2020. Some of the highlights, as you know, the millage rate currently is set based on the adopted tentative rate at 4.2876 per thousand dollars of, per thousand dollars of assessed value, which is an increase of .25 mils or 900, a little over, almost $911,000 in additional property tax revenue based on this millage increase. The city tax base increased 296 million in growth. Part of that is new growth and part of that is, is just, is the growth on current properties. Keep in mind that residential is limited to 3%. It has a 3% max. So that's part of this increase, which generated an additional million dollars in ad valorem revenues just from the increase in the actual values. The general fund is balanced currently using 471,000, a little more than $471,000. Keep in mind, you look at that and you think from the first public hearing, it was 910. What I've done, because I have to advertise, I had to advertise, had to get my advertisement into the paper right after our last hearing, so I didn't have much time. What I did was I reduced this number by that amount as a holding spot until we come to tonight to find out what, where we're going to set the final millage rate. So that is just basically is just, it's kind of the holding spot or where we've placed the dollars until we decide exactly where we're going to, to appropriate them tonight. So there are no new positions in the budget, but there are also no eliminated positions. All positions that were funded last year are funded in the current year. The merit pay, the employee pay for merit is based on performance, and it has a pay increase of up to 3% for all full eligible, full-time employees. The grounds division in this year in the FY21 budget has moved to the Parks and Recreation Department in an effort to be able to provide better service to our actual facilities, our parks, and our grounds. Health insurance, we've had an increase in health insurance of 11 and a half percent. That's pretty significant. As I said at the first public hearing, this 11 and a half percent in the budget that was, would have passed on to the employees for their dependent coverage, the, we have absorbed that for the employee. So that is included in the city's budget as part of the city's cost. So that is, that's a significant item. The property casualty and workers' compensation insurance increased by 8% in this budget over the prior year. Some other highlights, sidewalk repairs, there's money for sidewalk repairs, there's money for contract mowing, as you know. There is the speed humps program that is funded. There are some lighting, some, some funding for lighting improvements, street sweeping, stormwater, and stormwater improvements funding. There are significant infrastructure dollars for water, wastewater, and reclaimed water in this budget. Garbage rates, as you know, were increased a couple months back. We increased them effective October 1st, so they will go into effect October 1 of 2020. 3% for our residential customers and 6% for our commercial customers. Some infrastructure improvements, big items, very significant items. The design and construction of a traffic light at Vic and Lester Road. You have Harmon Road Extension Design, so designing the Harmon Road Extension Project. The St. John's River Water Management District Site Road Improvements that were approved. The West Kelly Park Road Capacity and Safety Study as we move forward with the, the Kelly Park area. The Peterson Road and King Street Improvements, there's funding to make those capital improvements. New sidewalk funding, there's money in here for new sidewalks. Stormwater and pipelining, there's funding for that, for our stormwater system. There is an additional restroom facility, an ADA walkway at the Northwest Recreation Complex. The last budget, we approved one, one bathroom facility at our, one of our ballfields, one of our ball, this does it for the other, for one of the, the sites, this puts another one on the other side. The Gross and Buckler Water Plant Well Upgrades, this is a compliance issue that we are addressing. Plymouth Regional Water Plant Well Upgrade, same thing. West Kelly Park Road, there's a 16-inch water main funded in here. There is a Golden Gym Road 16-inch water main, an Effie Drive 16-inch water main, a US 441 16-inch water main, and then there are lift station upgrades included as well. Lot of infrastructure improvements in the Kelly Park area. West Kelly Park Road, there's a 12-inch sewer main, Golden Gym Reclaimed Water Plant, the Northwest Reclaimed Water Transfer Pump Station, and the Golden Gym 30-inch reclaimed water main. Keep in mind, we were awarded a grant for this, a 50% grant with the state and with the St. John's, so they're paying, it's a $4 million project, they're paying $2 million, we're paying the other $2 million. These are impact fee projects. So I think that's critical to, to keep in mind, too, that these come from the impact fee dollars. Some major capital items, there's our replacement ambulance every year. We're doing a replacement ambulance. There's brush, truck pump replacement. There's air pack replacement program that we have initiated. There are 12 new police vehicles funded. There are various computers, laptops, and desktops. One of the areas is, part of this is desktops and our dispatch center to upgrade some of those in our dispatch. ADA compliance funding, there's funding for ADA compliance, and then there's funding for an asset management software. Some other items that are significant, you have the community center VFW flooring. There's additional funding for flooring, flooring to replace the flooring at the community center. There's AC unit replacements, funding for our AC units. We have some that are, are getting up there in age. We have a fleet service truck. If you recall, that's a truck that's been around forever that we're finally replacing for the fleet. This is the one they take when they go out onsite if they have to break down or they have an issue, they have to take it out and provide service. They've been limping along with that truck. So this is well overdue. So, and this is, again, was one of those significant items in the prior year that we didn't fund, that we've been able to fund this year. There's recreation field equipment and mowers for the Northwest Recreation for our athletic fields. There's museum, there's money for ceiling and repair to the museum. And then there's an automated sideload, sideload garbage truck that's also funded in here to re, to replace, actually, this one, yeah, this one replaces an automated sideload truck. And if you recall, there was another truck in a prior year, in this current year that we're in, where we funded, we knew we would have, we funded 70,000 of it. There was a $300,000 portion that we would have to fund in this coming year. So there are really two trucks funded or that will come on, come online for solid waste in 2021. Some items excluded, Fire Station 6 is not included in here. The Fire District Chief position, there was a request for that, it's not, it's, is not funded. The additional police officers that were talked about, they are not in this budget. We didn't hear word that we're, we can apply for the cops grant, so we are going to do that. The chief said that our chances are pretty, pretty good. Some neighboring jurisdictions were kind of in the program like we were and have recently applied for it and, and have had success. So the, the only thing is, this, they won't come online until the end of 2021 because by the time we apply and receive the funding, it will be later in the, in the end of 2021 or the beginning of the 2022 budget. But we are going to apply for that. The audio/video city council chambers, that is not funded in this budget. Again, we talked, as I talked about in the primary, we're looking at where we end this current fiscal year to see if this is, some of these items we can include with those dollars. Some of these are significant items that we've talked about over the year. Computer servers, there are some computer service servers that have, that are not funded in here, that IT have, has put out, pushed out into their five-year plan. Their additional fields for the Northwest Recreation Complex, a bathroom, a new, another set of bathrooms down by the amphitheater was an item that, that is not included. Some other items, a storage building for recreation, the cemetery division, as you know, we're having a storage issue and we're trying to address that as well, but that is an item that, that unfortunately, we don't have included. A new building for fleet and streets division, they need a new facility. So these are items that we will continue to look at during our five-year plan, and we will be looking at those in the next budget, in the next budget. City hall and public services fire repla, fiber replacement, street resurfacing, there is street resurfacing, a very small amount of street resurfacing in here. So it's a significant item because it's not, it's not at the current level that we, that we have been funding. And then Border Lake flooding issue, you know, we have an issue there, we've been working with our partners, we're trying to, to come up with a plan for the Border Lake flooding. That item is not included. So budget overview, I'm not going to go through every line like I did at the last meeting, but I do want to kind of go at a high level, and this is kind of hard to see. So let me get. I want to go at just the.
My screen is not working up here, for some reason.
Hey, Rob.
It just hasn't been on. No, it's, it's not been on. That one's on, but this one isn't.
So this is a little tough to see, but I want to go over the lines. I think it's a little better to see on the live feed than it is here in the, in the council chambers, but there are copies also on the table for, for those who want to see it, need a copy. But I wanted to kind of highlight that, that you can see overall, the city's budget is balanced at $105 million. Last year, it was almost $99 million. So you have a 6.1% increase from the prior year or about $6 million more. Your property tax revenue, the property tax number is up 14.4% over the prior year. This does include the current .25 mil that was set at the tentative budget hearing. So, and, and so you can see through some of these numbers, and again, I'm not going to go through every number tonight, but I wanted to kind of point out the significant numbers. You can see the intergovernmental revenues are down significantly, 13%. Again, this is overall city budget. That's the sales tax, part of that increase is due, or that decrease is due to the sales tax reductions or decreased revenues. I wanted to point out that impact fees, you see impact fees are slightly up a little bit over the prior year. Again, they're kind of, kind of watching what's happening or whatever. We think that, that, that this is a good number going forward. The $2 million grant I spoke about is significant. I think if you look here, you'll see last year we had 500,000. That is the grant that funds those, those, those capital projects that I talked about and the utility side of the, of the, the budget. And then you see a $13.9 million reserve number. The majority of that reserve is the utility impact fees, comes from Utility Impact Fee Fund. Those are dollars that we have collected that will, that can only be spent on those capital improvements, and so we're spending some of those dollars that have been in those reserves that we've, that we've accumulated for the, that was intended for these projects. On the summary side, on the, for the other side, on the summary by fund, you can see the general fund is still at 3%. It's the same number that it was in the, in the prior meeting. Keep in mind, like I said earlier, we reduced the, the amount that we were taking from the reserves until we've decided where or if we're going to use those additional, the additional millage rate or the, the .125 where we're going to, to place those. The streets fund you can see is down, whoops. The streets fund you can see is down 20%. As I said, the, in the last meeting, the sales tax, or the gas tax is down 11%. We have a landfill host fee that we're working with, trying to, it was about $225,000 that the agreement has expired, but we're working to see if we can't continue that agreement. We feel pretty confident, but we don't have it, we don't have it black and white yet. So, so you can see there's been a big reduction there. That's one of the biggest reductions. And then if you look down to, some of these are smaller, these funds are smaller funds. A lot of these, these law enforcement trust funds and police discretionary funds, they come back to council, so you, you don't see a lot of increase or change there. You can see that stormwater is similar to what it was the year before. And community, the utility operations is significant. It's a, it's not a very big increase, a little less than 2%. Again, we're under current rate study, so there is no, no increase from the, from the rate study because the rate study ended and we're currently under review now for a rate study there, as is stormwater. We're also under a rate study in the stormwater for the stormwater program as well. Impact fees, utility impact fees. So this is why the budget basically is up over the prior year significantly. We were at $9 million and we're going to $13 million. So, and again, the majority of that is using the reserves for those projects in the, in that Kelly Park area. That's where the majority of that, it's all capital improvements. Sanitation fund is up 12% overall. Again, if you recall, we added two people a couple months back or whatever, I think it was a couple months back, we added a couple people to the sanitation fund and when we had the rate increase to be able to give relief to, to some of our drivers and also for our growth in our sanitation.
Division.
Or department.
Division.
Because they're a division. So kind of real quick, where the. You can see the revenues, property tax represents about 15% of the pie of this, again, keep in mind, this is total city. This is all, these are all dollars. Charges for services represent about 28%. Those are ambulance fees, utility fees, solid waste fees or sanitation fees. Intergovernmental represents 11% of the pie. Reserves represents 13% of the pie. So you can see, those are the significant pieces of the revenue, where the revenues come from. How the revenues are funded by fund, you can see that 49% of the dollars that come in for the total city go to the general fund. The utility operations is 22%, it's the next piece. Utility impact fees represent 12%. You can see the streets represents 3% of the total pie, but this, this graph depicts the, where the dollars are, are spent by funds. On the expense side, again, you can see everything is balanced currently at $105 million. Personnel services are $46 million, are up 4.3%. That's the increase in salaries, performance pay, health insurance. All of those payments are, are included in that number. The operating expenses are down by 4%. Capital outlay is up 41%. Again, those are, those big utility impact fee funds, projects that are in there. Debt service is down a small amount. It's because as, as we continue to pay, pay the debt down, that's a small, that is a small increase. I mean, a small decrease, sorry. No contributions this year. You might ask where that came from. Contributions were recorded when we had the city center. There were some improvements we made to FDOT's road. They are not our assets, so they are considered contributions and not capital. Transfers are down a slight amount. Again, this is due to sales tax. We have a reduction in, in state revenue sales tax, or shared sales tax that affects our streets fund because a portion of that has to be transferred to the streets fund to fund streets projects or streets function. And then you'll see contingency of $440,000 that, those are dollars from the police and fire impact fee funds that are going into reserves for future infrastructure and capital projects. So on the other side, the, where the dollars by, by function, general government you can see is, is 7.8%. Most of that increase is due to insurance. Community development has a slight, a small decrease. Transportation has a decrease. Again, that's because of the streets and the streets fund. Public safety is up almost 4% or 3.8% at $31 million. Public services is a, is a decrease again, and then you see culture and recreation, that's because we've moved that grounds function. So you're up 30, or you're down 31 here, but you're up 29 here. We've moved that function to, to Parks and Rec. Stormwater, there's an increase, a small increase in stormwater for those stormwater capital projects that we're doing, the street sweeping. Community development, this is your budget that was approved at the CRA meeting, same number, same amount, all of that just carries over and goes into the citywide budget. Special assessments are, those are, those are set and they're the same as the prior year based on, on the benefit units that they go to. Debt service and transfers is down 3.7. So again, the transfers that we have from utility funds to the general fund, we have left those the same for the last three years as we have, because we're having a study, as you know, performed on those, and we will have that information when it comes back and we will know what that number really is made up of and how that number, what that number should be and how going forward that number will be treated.
Do we anticipate a significant increase or any, any feel on that right now?
You know, I wish I could tell you, but I don't, I don't know because I don't know what all they will include in that number. That number is made up of the administrative costs that we're providing to them, and so they're take, they've taken all of our data, man-hours and vehicles, and they've gathered all kinds of data to come back with a number. And then sometimes you see in here some payment in lieu of taxes. You know, the utility fund doesn't pay taxes because they are a government utility. You see some numbers in there and things like that. So I don't know, Commissioner. I'm hoping, I, I will tell you, two years ago, I thought it was too high based on what I've seen when you look at the total, you know, fund, the dollars coming into the fund and the amount that should be, that, that would be transferred out. It's a pretty high number, but they will tell us what, how that number should be calculated.
It's just taking money out of one pocket and putting it in the other, so it's just a.
Right. Well, and you, and you have to be careful with this, in this situation, because if you're bringing in 20 million, but you're transferring out 6 million, is that, is that reasonable for your rate payer on the utility side from an administrative standpoint? It's basically the cost that they would have to incur if they didn't have the general government side of the house providing those services for them. So, so the utility system, you can see it's up 20%. Again, that's impact fees. We have a lot more impact fee projects. Utility system here includes the operating fund and the impact fees. Airports the same, as you know, we're keeping it the same, monitoring that. We plan to list that for sale in the near future, and you will be, that will be, that will be brought to you. Sanitation is up 14%. Again, this is the expense side from the revenue side. This increase is due to the increase that you've increased in rates, increase in growth. And then the reserves are 440. Again, we're putting the 440 in reserves from the police and fire impact fees as we, you know, build those reserves for future projects related to police and fire. So where does the money go? You can see personnel, our personnel services, our valuable employees are 44% of the total pie, when you look at the total budget. 23% goes to, go to operating for the operating expenses. 18% is capital outlay. Debt service represents about 7%. Contributions are zero this year. Transfers represent 7% and contingency, which is the dollars that we're putting back in the impact fee fund, is a 1%. By function, public safety, again, keep in mind, this is total budget, 30% of the, of the total city budget goes to public safety. 24% goes to the utility services. Sanitation represents about 5%. And I'm sorry, yeah, transportation is about 5%. Sanitation is 5%. So culture and recreation represents about 5% as well. So this, this kind of tells you where those dollars are going based on functions or service levels, services that we provide. I went back to my same spot. I didn't listen, Rob. Okay. So we went through the citywide revenues and expenditures. Real quick, I want to go through the general fund side. This is the, of course, the main fund of the city. You can see the taxes in that fund represent almost 41% of the general fund. Licenses and permit, 12%. Intergovernmental revenues, 20%. This is the sales tax number. So together, the taxes and the intergovernmental revenues represent over 60% of the budget. Charges for services, 7%. Again, this is your, the charges for the services we provide like the EMS billing and, and charges and things of that nature. Fines and forfeiture are a small portion, 1%. There are no other financing sources, we're not borrowing any money. Transfer from other funds, 13.8%. This is the transfer for, that we talked about from the other utility funds. And then almost 1% is a transfer from reserves. So that's kind of where the revenues come from. So where do the dollars go? Public safety, almost 60% of the budget, of the general fund budget goes to public safety. Community development, a little less than 5%. Recreation, almost 10%. Public services, a little more than 4%. Almost 6% is debt service. And then transfer to other funds is 1%. And keep in mind, that is the transfer that we have to make to the streets fund. Administration, 13%, and then financial services is 2%. So that can, you can see where the dollars go. So I told you the last meeting, I was going to kind of, kind of give you some information on what we've done. I know resurfacing streets is an area where we've been hit the hardest. It's always toughest, the toughest fund and has been. For the years that I've worked in budgeting, it's always seems to be the toughest fund because gas tax don't usually stay up with the needs of our improvements in infrastructure of our roads. But I wanted to show you in what we've done over the last several years so that you know that we really have put a significant amount of funding in street signs. This is an area, we've been putting a little bit of funding here and there, but we put a, a very big, big amount of funding, almost $45,000 in street signs, street signs as we ramp up that street sign. street signs, as we ramp up that street signs program. Sidewalk repairs, we have done a lot of sidewalk repairs. And, you know, I want to thank the, the public services staff, we've contracted out a lot of this too, but we've done a lot of sidewalk repairs. We had a backlog of sidewalk work orders, and you can see in the last two years, we've done almost two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in sidewalk repairs. Street resurfacing fund, all over the chart, when you look at this. So, there are some years we didn't do any. Again, it, it's a funding thing, it's definitely a funding, you know, issue. Eighteen, we had a significant amount that we've done, and currently, as you know, we're doing another significant eight hundred thousand dollars worth of street resurfacing that we, that we budgeted in the twenty-twenty budget, and that's currently underway. So, you can see, this is an area where, and again, this fund, it doesn't have the funding to keep up, to do resurfacing this, of this nature every year, it's just not possible with the dollars that we have, so...
And does that include the increased amount that was discussed last week?
This does not. I'm getting, I'm going to get to that slide. This is where we currently sit today. So, some additional uses of that four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars that we talked about at the last meeting, which is the eighth of a mil increase that we talked about, or that we set, when you set the tentative mileage rate. So, it's about two hundred and forty thousand dollars. We got with Public Works, he got a, he got, Jeff got us some numbers. It's about two hundred and forty thousand dollars to do one mile stretch of a two-lane road. So, that would do one mile of a two-lane road. It's about a hundred, right at a hundred and nineteen thousand, a hundred and twenty thousand per lane mile in resurfacing. So, that would be about two hundred and forty thousand if we, if, if we had put some dollars in that, in that fund. Contract mowing, about two hundred and fifteen thousand extra dollars would help with us to be able to contract out more of the mowing, and allow some of our city staff to redirect and focus more on detail work of the city grounds and facilities. So, this would allow us to take and put that contract mowing out to the vendor, and have them do the mowing, and let our guys do the finished work, the detail work, the finished work. So, what we, what, a proposal that we would make, if, if we were to go this route, is that we would transfer two of those streets positions to, because some of our streets that are mowing now, that currently, they would still mow retention ponds. We would only, the contractor would take all the right-of-way mowing, but we would still do the retention ponds that we have to maintain. They don't, they're not in every week, but our guys would still that, need, need to be able to do that. And then we have a couple other little roads here and there that, that our guys would keep, as we discover, we've discovered a few more roads that are ours that we need to maintain. But, we would transfer two of the streets positions to the grounds, to be able to help grounds with all the detail work, at our facilities, in our grounds, in our grounds area. And again, together, that would be your four hundred and fifty-five, where your four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars would go. So, that's, that's kind of where we are. I can answer any questions that you have, or any comments that you have. Again, it's, you know, it's just a matter of where we want to, do we want to put those dollars, and these are two of the areas where we've had a lot of discussion and a lot of talk, so I think this is a proposal that gives you that, but... And I do want to say this, before we finish, I want to thank the staff. It's been a tough year. It has really been a tough year, they will tell you that too. Really, really tough year. We got through it, we've done well. I think the budget that you have before you is a great budget, to do what, the things that we need to do, continue to provide the high service level that we provide in our public safety, from our utilities, sanitation, we're making those capital improvements that we need to make in the Kelly Park area, that we call it, because as we've, as you know, we are, you know, moving forward, there's a lot of growth in that area, and we need to be ready for that. So, I think the budget is, is a good budget. I think it, you know, it will do the things that we need to do. Is it everything we want? No. Is it all of our wish lists? No. But I think staff, I, I know staff has done a really good job, and they can, can provide the service levels that our citizens are used to with this budget.
Mr. Becker, you want to start us out?
Sure. Can you just pivot back to that last slide?
I do that every time. Okay.
So, basically, what we're saying is that, that entire four fifty-five, four fifty-three would be a transfer from general fund into the streets fund? Is that correct? Because all of that is handled out of that particular fund?
Correct. Well, well, when we transfer the two positions back, we would have to take their salaries and put them back in, and put them into the general fund. So, we would, once we make the transfer for the two, we would fund them, and then the additional of the two fifteen would fund the street mowing.
But the, the first part of the...
But the first part, all goes there.
The first part of the transaction would be, four fifty-five gets moved into street funds?
Yes.
And then all the particulars about how you structure that administratively gets worked out.
Absolutely.
But at the end of the day...
The streets fund gets the dollars.
When I get stopped on the street, and they say, "Where did that four fifty-five go to?" By the way, it went into the streets fund, for the purposes of beautifying our city, making sure that we have roads that are, you know, infrastructures, infrastructurally sound?
Right.
Roadways, things like that.
The only, the only thing, the difference, the only thing is, there will be a portion that will stay in the general fund, because that's where the detailed grounds work is done, on facilities, maintaining the facilities and keeping them up, so there'll be a, a portion of that, that will, that will come back to the general fund. But you're correct, the first initial, all of it goes to streets fund, and then whatever services they provide for the general fund, it would go back into that.
Right, because like we discussed on Monday, when we set the budget, I'm basically buying an outcome from staff.
Right.
And we discussed it at length the last meeting, is, you know, beautification-wise, mowing schedules, trimming around the edges of trees, or the bases of trees, so you don't have this, you know, you know, like the pictures that I showed last week. But, that's our expectation, right? Is, these monies go there, and we're not getting calls, you know, about mowing being kept up, or questioning about why this area of the, of the city's not being mowed, and it's this back and forth, oh, that's county, oh, it's city, it's county, you know. We're on top of those things. And then from potholes, patchwork, all that sort of stuff. That's the outcome that I'm expecting when we set the budget, like we're going to today. And that's a general head nod, and I, I think we're aligned there, I just want to make sure that verbally, we're, that's what we're committing to.
Absolutely. Well, and I can say, I can't guarantee you that every pothole will be fixed, and every sidewalk will be perfectly aligned, but I can say this, with these additional funds, we can put those funds towards those areas that we've been having issues with. I will tell you that I am proud to say that this last six months, we've put the right people in the right places, and we've seen a significant improvement in some of those areas, because a lot of it was, and, and you, as you know, we didn't have programs in place. Jeff's come on board, and the staff has worked really hard to putting programs in place. We need a sign program. We need a, a resurfacing plan, so that we know which roads we need to go to, and every year, we all work from that list. We need potholes, we need, you know, we were, like sidewalks, we got backlogs in sidewalks, we caught them up, but they've put a, I think, you know, Jeff has been a great hire, and I think, you know, he's already started with those programs, and putting those in place, and I think that's the key. Get the programs in place so that we stay with the program. These dollars would help with those programs, absolutely.
Right, and for the, for the purposes of people watching, I mean, the street funds, handles, street signs, sidewalks, road resurfacing, this right-of-way mowing schedule, all of this stuff is buried within that budget. So, you know, like you said before, just not possible with the funds that we have right now, but we can't, we can't see that, that ebb and flow in that budget. We've got to continually work on these things, or else we're going to fall so far behind that we're going to have to just sink so much money into it long-term, if we don't address it now.
Right. And that, and that, and to that point, that's why we've also addressed some of these long-term costs or problems that we've had issues with, the street lighting. That will help, so those dollars will be able to free up some of those, those dollars that we have in there, to put towards those items, and then the street lighting would, would actually pay for them, it would pay for themselves through those assessments.
Right. Because at the end of the day, I don't want to wake up on a Saturday and have to go weed whack a median, myself, or other people, that, that's not their role within the city, having to, you know, offset mowing schedules, things like that. I just want to make sure that we've funded you all enough to take care of the things that they should be taken care of. One quick question on the study itself, and I, my assumption on the road repaving study that, that's in the budget, is that that fifty thousand dollar line item for the professional services work?
Yes, that's what that number is.
And how long does that typically take? How long will that study take? The entire year, half a year?
I've been saying a year, I actually believe it'll take us probably six months or so.
And then, no, because, and just, in full transparency, I mean, where I sit as a Commissioner, I would say ninety-eight percent of my emails, and maybe probably ninety-nine point ninety-eight percent of my emails are really about beautification, keeping on top of these things. Hardly do I ever get, hey, you know, when the article was written last week about, you know, potentially raising our tax rate, it's not, whoa, you can't raise the tax rate, it's more, I'm not getting the services that I expect my city to be performing for me. So, that's where my mindset is, in terms of whatever direction that we go this evening. Last question that I have, because I see it on here, in terms of the HR director position, you know, I've gotten some emails lately about HR type of issues. I just want to confirm that if this budget's passed, the HR director position's in there, and there's no current posting for that position now on our website, that that would be posted immediately, to try and get that position filled.
Commissioner, that, to your, to answer your questions, yeah, to answer your questions, yes, the funding is in here for the HR director position. We are, we're, staff's work, we're working on a plan, we have a plan, and I'm going to share that with you, each individually, the plan that I have in place for that. I wanted to, I want to sit down with each one of you and go over the issues and things that I've had, so that you'll be, I want you to have all the information, the correct information to that. So, I want to, I'm going to be sitting down with you and explaining that to you, but those positions and the budget is funded for that position in that department, yes.
Okay.
Commissioner Smith?
I have a couple of questions. Funds that was allocated in the previous year budget that was not used, where do those funds go?
So, Commissioner, how that works is, the way that, the way that those funds are established is, any personnel dollars or any operating dollars, if you don't spend those, they go back in the pot to be reallocated in your new budget, or at a later date with budget amendments. Your capital projects are the only items usually, and I will give you the exception. Your capital projects or outlay projects, you establish that project, and you establish a dollar for it, it comes forward until that project is completed. So, those capital dollars will continue to come forward until the project is, is completed or done. For example, if this, if there's still some kind of a, an item that still needs to be done on the parking lot, here next door on Fifth Street, any dollars that are left over, because they may not finish until October of next year, we'll bring those dollars forward. So, those dollars come forward. But as far as operating and personnel costs, those don't come forward, we establish a new budget for your personnel and operating going forward, which is what you're doing tonight, with the exception of, if we have a contract, if you've approved a contract with somebody, and it runs, it need, it runs over a month or two, or there's, they haven't finished a, a contract, whether it be professional services, or something of that nature, that amount, that amount would come forward to complete that contract that you approved. But everything else stays in, it goes back in the pot, or goes back into the reserves, and then you reallocate in your new budget.
So, does it ever show anywhere, funds that was not used, or personnel positions that were not filled, this was a savings, or this was rolled back, does that show in place?
That does not show in this budget, your CAFER, you, I think in your CAFER, there's a place in your CAFER, I think, where it will show, you can see that, your budget to actual. So, you'll be able to see in budget to actual in the CAFER, when the year's done, and they roll everything together and do the audit, you'll be able to see what was budgeted and what was actually spent, and you'll be able to see the dollars that were left on the table.
Okay.
And also, Commissioner, I bring before you a budget amendment. Last year, it was in January, for all funds that were rolled over from the previous year. If you remember, it was a huge budget amendment, like eight million dollars, because it had a lot of capital projects that, and funding in our contracts that were rolled over.
Yeah, yeah, those I saw, just wondering about the personnel part.
But, and you also realize that we, you know, we budgeted for amount of sales tax that we didn't recover, so a lot, some of those, those personnel costs will go toward, to replace the dollars that we didn't get from sales tax. See, we, we, we budgeted, last year's, March comes and COVID hits, and, so we lost almost, probably going to end up at the end of the year by almost three million dollars lower in sales tax.
From March through September.
Correct, correct. So, some of those cost savings that you're talking about will go to, to plug those gaps.
Okay. And, and so, so likewise, then, some of the positions that we're budgeting now, that are not filled now, would also be showing as a savings and go back into the CAFER, okay? All right. And my, my next question is, is that, when I looked at the budget for the ground maintenance department, it showed that last year, they had nine positions, and in twenty-twenty-one, it shows five. And so, I'm trying to understand, if we're trying to improve grounds, how do we go from nine to five?
So, Commissioner, in, in the beginning, when I talked about that we moved grounds to parks and rec, grounds and streets were kind of together, and so, they were all, they were all in one. And what we did was, we sat down and we talked to Brian's group, and what we did was, we took of those, all of those individuals that were in streets and grounds, if you call it, we decide, we went through each one of them and picked out which part they did. This, this person did grounds, this person does grounds, I did streets, so we, we got it correct. We got our people in the right, basically, if you will, in the right funds, because we had them all together. So, we pulled the grounds people out, and we sat down with, with streets and recreation, and they decided on, these are the positions that currently do grounds, we moved those five over there, and then the others stayed in the streets. That is part of the proposal that we're talking about here, is taking two of those from streets and moving them over into grounds, so that they have more individuals, if we go this route, to do more of that detail work.
Okay. All right. When, when we met earlier, we talked about the signs at entrance of the city, is, is that still something that's going to be, have we done through this budget, or no?
It's not in this budget, Commissioner, but, but I want to go back and look, I know there was some talk in prior years about street signs, entrance signs. I want to kind of go back and see what, you know, that, that plan or whatever, and look through that, and kind of, that would be something we would bring back to you. It's not in this budget, we don't know what those costs are, we haven't, we'd have to look at how it's been designed. We also got to look at where we can place them. You have to be careful, you can't place them on FDOTs right away, you can't place them in CS, CSX is sometimes very difficult to get things placed in there right of ways, but we'd have to figure out locations, design, and costs, and then we can address that. But that is one of the things, yeah, we're going to, as I told you, we're going to go back and pull that out, because there was conversation in prior, prior years, and I want to be able to pull that out and see what, where we were with that plan.
All right. And were you able to get with Recreation about some additional activities for our senior population?
Absolutely, Commissioner, excited about that. Brian, I talked about that a couple times, I think, since I talked to you. Actually, one today, we talked, we talked about it today as well, but we have funding, we've got funding in our current budget without, without this additional increase, so that, I don't want you to think this increase does that, but there's a, there is funding for our senior, but there's funding for a lot of our programs in recreation, we just need to be able to have our programs. We need to be able to have more than ten or fifty people together, until we can, you know, that, we're kind of waiting on that sign. Once we get that, we have the funding to do those programs. And as I talked to you, and I got with Brian, I said, "We need to reach out to our seniors and see what they would like. What would you like? What, what kind of activities, what things would you like that we can build into those programs?" But there is funding to do those programs.
Okay. And likewise, as Commissioner Becker referenced, the HR director position, we also have a deputy chief position that's funded. We, do we have a time limit as to where we're going to fill that position?
We do not, as of, as of today. I will tell you, the position's funded, it's in there. So, I think that's one of the things we'll need to, we'll, you know, we'll, we get with the chief and talk about, you know, that position, and how we want to, what we want to do with that position, but the position is in there, and there is funding, you know, if we wanted to move that, if we wanted to move on that position, it's in there.
And, and you, you did address the four police officers in reference to the grant, and you said, "The chief says that there's a good possibility we're going to get that."
Yes, it's a good possibility. He and I talked, and he says it's a good possibility, it's just, we probably won't know until the end of our twenty-one fiscal year, but we will be applying for that as soon as, as soon as we can, so...
Yeah, I think Orange County was on the same track as us, and they already got funded this year. We, you know, we probably, we could have probably applied, didn't think that that was a possibility, but, so they got it quicker than we thought, and so, that would lead you to believe we're, we can get that COPS grant, which, you know, pays the hundred percent of the officer's salary, so then all we have to do is come up with the equipment and the car. So, it's a, for the first year. So, it's a, it's a great deal for, you know, municipalities, that, that COPS grant.
All right. Good, Commissioner? Okay. Mr. Banks?
Okay. Basically, I, I really tried to get a feel of what does our boss want, being the people, which is pretty challenging when you have fifty-three thousand bosses. And, you know, again, the response that I've gotten, it's, it's kind of the mixed bag, it's, but the biggest response was what I termed curb appeal. And to me, it's something that the people themselves want to see, but I think it also to me, is something that lends itself towards revenue production, because it's going to production because it's going to be hard to draw the growth that we want to see without those things being taken care of. So for me, I just, I still think that's an important thing. The other half of that is we're looking at this increase. Every response that I got and I asked, you know, please respond, every response that I got was negative on raising that. In the past, I've had different ones that have said, hey, we don't mind it coming up. So it's like, well, on one hand, we're needing to have the level of service that, you know, as Commissioner Becker said, that's what I agree and that's what the people are wanting. So we need to do that. I'm comfortable with doing what we need to do to raise that because if that's not done, it's going to hurt us in many levels. As far as the street side, that's where I've, you know, just considered, what's the best step forward? How do we approach that? I agree that we need to have a plan and then work the plans. So the study, I think, is important. For me, again, statistically and why I asked that question specifically, we are already putting in a significant portion towards streets. Does that cover them all? No. But again, even with the X-ray, it's not covering everything as well. I guess I'm more comfortable when it comes to that approach is looking at, let's fund the study, let's get that in place. And then at that point, I am comfortable, as I've stated before, again, everyone knows I want our reserves healthy, if we get there so that we're not penny wise, pound foolish. If we've got something that's going to cost us because we wait, I'm willing at that point to say, okay, if we need to dip, dip into that at that point and, you know, utilize some of that to get us through to the next budget, then I think that's a good way to bridge that because we are putting already significant funds towards streets. So I guess that's that, that's the side that I'm wrestling with, with, with our boss saying, we want this, I'm comfortable doing that, even though it is going to cost some more. But the response that I've gotten, and maybe you all have gotten different responses, but that at the same time, because so many are suffering, I think this is a difficult year to take too much of a bite out of that. So to me, finding that, that happy medium as we approach that and we have a clear plan, I, I am not opposed at that point, if there's some necessities that we say, if we don't deal with this, it is going to put us behind. If we need to dip a little bit more into those reserves at that point, get through to that next year. But again, that's that thin line too, because as, as you've said and as we know, we will still see the trailing effect of the things that we face this year. So I would propose that we maybe look at a balanced going forward. It gets, as you said, the same responses that I've been getting. We can't talk until we're here, is that, that curb appeal, the mowing, the, the sharpness, things looking sharp. So that when they walk through Apopka, or when they, they drive through Apopka, this city gives that essence of prosperity. And I think that will lend itself towards, again, revenue production. So, and as well, just to echo, I, I looked into the information on the HR. Again, I've kind of dug into some of that myself. And, and as long as we have a positive move forward to fill that position successfully, then I think we need to do that.
Okay. I guess it's up to me. I, I struggle with, I mean, I, I would, if it were just me voting on, on my own, I would probably go back to our original agreement. So we come forward today and here we are, you know, looking at another additional 455,000. And I, I see it's kind of just the opposite. I, I, yes, we need curb appeal and I get that. But I look at the constituents that are out of jobs, that, you know, struggling to maintain what they've got. And for us to go out and raise taxes, for, for cutting grass, I just, I have a hard, for me, it's a hard time because a year from now, nobody will remember that the grass was 12 inches tall versus nice, neat cut grass. On the other hand, I have no problem spending on, on streets because I think it's saving us, it's a 20-year plan versus a grass, which is a three-week plan. You know, but I, I don't want to be the one to the stumbling block to, to, to getting a, you know, I want a 4-0 vote. So, but if it were, you know, me on my own, I would say I'm fine with the streets, but I'm not so great spending either reserves. I mean, so here we are spending reserves. You call it whichever, you can either call it the tax increase or you can call it reserves. But we're spending money that we don't have to cut grass. And I mean, I just, just philosophically, I can't, I can't get there. I mean, I'm going to do it because that's what y'all, that's the, that's the will of the, of this council, but...
Well, to me, it's, it's what I'm hearing from the people themselves. That's where, I, I agree with you. But at the same time, I think there's, you know, again, I'd say...
I fundamentally, I disagree with this statement because we've, we've had this issue for many years. So it's not just this year where we're, where we're out of, where we're so far away in terms of budget. We've been dealing with this every single year.
Yeah.
I mean, so, yeah, it may sound, I guess silly, but making sure our, our right of ways are nuisance free or up kept or whatever the case might be, whatever you want to call it, that does lead to economic development considerations and just pride of quality of life, pride that people want to live here and have a beautiful city.
And I get that. I'm with you. I, I, you know, if it was a good year, I had, I'd have no problem. I, I just say that, you know, for me, it's, it's, it's a little, you know...
And Mayor, I, I would hope that since we're putting it all in the streets, it's not just going to be perceived just for cutting grass, but because I even talked about the, the appearance of the sidewalks that Commissioner Becker pointed out last week. And today I drove from the chamber all the way to the 451 and the sidewalks are horrible. You can barely tell that it's pavement. I mean, they're blank. It just doesn't give the appearance of a place of a clean city. And so I'm hoping it would also do that as well. In addition to that, I was out with my family trying to eat breakfast and a citizen pulled me to the side in 30 minutes, talking about a retention pond that they came in and, and cut the grass, but there's trees hanging over inside the retention pond all the way around the pond. So they're going in and doing what they can do and get out so they can go do something else because they don't have the real time to spend there to make it look presentable the way the homeowner thinks it should look, because it was right next to her, her house. And so I went by and took a look and it looked as bad as the 30 minutes she spent telling me about it. So, so I, I think that they don't, they will appreciate the fact that we are listening to them even, even in a time like this.
I, I understand. I mean, I think, but also think that we're, we're making progress. I think had we not done anything additional. So I, obviously this money is going to go to good use. We're not going to waste it. It's going to, it's going to do exactly what you're asking it to do. But I also think we, you know, with, with the inmate crew, had they been on for the last three months, I also think that, that we've got the contractor up and running now and, and they're really starting to get into their own. And in this budget, we've got, where they're going to start to take over more for, you know, the grounds. So I think without an additional dollars, it would have gotten better. Does it meet your, your criteria? Probably not. So I don't, I don't disagree with that. I just, I just fundamentally have a hard time spending money on three-week fixes. I mean, that's, I got no problem on a 20-year fix for roads. I just, but, but, but I'm not, I don't want to get in the way of that. But, but I do want to, you know, just to leave it at that and then I'll look for a motion from the council. We do have other, you know, costs going, you know, up. We've got, I mean, I looked at, just trying to do some of the calculations like Commissioner Becker had done. And if you look at the cost, you know, going up the quarter mill, it's, it's between the, the value going up 3%, which is every, I think every house is going to go up, there's 3%. That's $24 plus the increased millage of 51. So it's $75 is what's going to go up for a homeowner. You're also going to take the 51 cents per month for, for our garbage collection is going to go up. We can almost guarantee the stormwater is going to double from $25 to $50 next year. So it's not just 30 bucks. It's, you know, it's 100 and something dollars. I mean, and for, for some people, that's not a lot of money. I just, but, but we are in tough times and we know there are people out there that are hurting. And so I just, I want to be, you know, cognizant of that, the situation that some of our, you know, the people who live here in Apopka are, are facing right now. So...
What was the first calculation that you quoted? I'm sorry.
Well, what I, I took a $2,000 assessed value and then, but you, then you're going to have a six, you're going to have a 3% increase because of the value going up 3%. The value of the house is going to go up 3%. So that, that gets you to, to, that's 24, 22, and then increasing the millage adds 51, 50.
But to, but you're saying $75 would be the property tax bill for an average resident?
Additional, yes.
Additional, above and beyond. That's on a $300,000 tax assessed value home, which is...
200,000 assessed value. So that, that means 250,000 dollar house with the 50,000 home sit exemption.
So if...
Because you've got the 3% increase. I mean, we didn't, we didn't factor in the 3% increase, which is automatic, well, not automatic. As values go up, you got the 3% increase plus you got the, the quarter mill increase on top of...
Which that's what I was saying last week.
If you have a, so our, like I said last week, our, the median home value in our, in our city is like 205,000, call it. That's your median market value, your tax assessed value. I'll, I'll just use my own home. My own home is probably valued, sales price probably around 310,000.
Okay.
And what I look at, when I look at my tax assessed value, it's about 145, 149,000. If I looked at what was currently at our current millage rate, I'm paying $605 a year for City of Apopka taxes.
Right.
At the millage rate of 4.28, I'm paying $643 for a delta of $37.50. That's, that's, that's the, that's kind of your pro forma, your standard, how much people are going to pay in increases for what we're describing.
Well, when did you buy your house?
2006, 2007?
See, and what happened is when the market crashed, your, your, the value of your home went down and the assessed value went down, but it's only gone up 3%. So somebody bought a house in 2012, didn't start that lower number. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So they're, they're paying a higher tax for the same house that you own than you are. So it's, you know, I'm the same...
There's variables in play. Right, exactly. You're going to have some that are like that, some that are a little bit higher, generally speaking, yeah.
Yeah. So I mean, anybody that's bought a house in the last six to eight years is going to be paying much higher taxes than you are because you got the, the down, the down dip, but with the, the slower 3% increase from there. But I, you know, I don't, I don't need to...
Again, that, that's the challenge for me because everyone that I heard from said, no, we really don't want to see it go that high in this year. So I'm trying to find, well then, what's that happy medium? Because they are also saying, we do want to see and make sure that these issues that we've had year after year, as long as I've been here, are addressed. So, I mean, should we look at a pragmatic view on that and find that happy medium? And instead of just taking the, the leap from, you know, the full, that full amount, maybe cut that in half and make ground, either split it both. If, if there wants to see, you know, if you want to see streets and you want to see, you know, some curb appeal, maybe we don't get as much, but we make progress. Because again, I'm trying to respond what the people are saying. And they're saying on this hand, we do want to see it looking sharper and better. And from the development standpoint, I think that's a positive. The other hand is, but we don't want the pound of flesh. Maybe the half pound we're okay with. So...
We were already at the half pound when the, the first budget we brought you. So now we're, I mean, you could, so you're saying a three-quarter pound of flesh.
But that doesn't accomplish the other thing that I've heard consistently for years as well. That's, that's just, that's my concern. And that's why I asked, can we do that in that original budget? And it really came back, we really can't do that much. We're doing better than we were, but we really need a little bit more for it to be sharp.
Well, I think, I think there are a lot of factors. COVID hit. And I can tell you, had we not had the downturn, had the, the $3 million hit in COVID, that affected all of our departments. And that was one of the areas, you know, we, we'd everybody looking at all their costs. Also the inmates, we haven't had inmates three, four months. It's been, it's been hectic and it's been tough because the inmates picked up the trash, did a lot of the, the edging and all of, and, and blowing and, and stuff like that. So a lot of them aren't allowed on mowers. And then our guys would do the mowing. So that was, they were a step ahead of doing the, the trimming and polishing work or whatever. We came through and mowed, so we were able to move quicker. Some of the stuff that you see out at Northwest Recreation, we have a crew out there that mows that. Well, we didn't have the inmate crews. So when you, we took those, you know, eight members, that eight, 10 members that are on that crew, and when you don't have them for three or four months, then it, it's tough. Our guys are still mowing, but the, we lost that portion. So I think there's been a lot of factors. I know that recently we have put somebody at City Hall, Greg, to be a permanent, you know, to, to, to work on the facilities because we haven't really done a lot of work on trying to keep up with mowing. We hadn't did a lot of work on the, on the actual facilities. So we've put things in place to make a difference. You know, whether it's, you know, enough, we'll see. But we've moved things around. One of the reasons we went to the contract mowing was to take a lot of our streets people off the mowing. It was, it was, it was so many roads, it was hard for us to get it, keep everything, get everything done. And like I said earlier, it's tough hiring people. Now, I'm not going to sit here and tell you, paint a, a nice picture and tell you, I can hire three or four mowing or landscaping people tomorrow. We are struggling trying to find people, trying to find maintenance workers that, to do the mowing and the, and the landscaping. So, so, and, and, and it's tough for our staff. It's tough to mow and do all the finish work with, with, you know, those numbers. But had COVID not hit, I think you would have seen some difference. But...
This is where I struggle, right? Because we, this is our fifth budget workshop that I've sat through. We've had great years. We've had, this year's a tough year. But yet we still have no sustainability plan. We have no, you know, fleet sustainability. What are we going to do with our kind of park space, all this sort of stuff? Because every year, we're just rubbing nickels together. And so, and we're so afraid to like touch this millage rate that's so punitively low compared to other municipalities around us. I don't understand why we're not using that as to get us to a fair foundational point of view about other cities that are doing it well. I mean, our tax rate is punitively low. Well, I mean, so, yeah, we keep on going back to this year, but how, next year, how do we curb, you know, emergency roofing repairs on our roofs versus getting in front of it and actually changing them out? It's not just about grass. Grass is, you know, a little example of the, the bigger problem at hand here. But if we don't have a plan to do all these other things, a plan, we still don't have a plan to, what our, what our, what our reserve fund balance percentage policy is and how we step up to that. We don't have that. So we can talk about it all day long, but it's not a policy. So, you know, so we, we keep on, we, we keep on talking about every, each verbatim, each meeting is talking about, oh, we just can't afford this. And when you say that, it's like we're talking about basic stuff.
Well, Mayor, I have a, so I would like to make a few comments to that because I will tell you, when I came here two years ago, there was a lot on the table. There were $10 million in projects that had to be paid for contracts that weren't budgeted, that I, we had to figure out, how are we going to pay? We had the city center, we had the Martin Road. They're huge projects. We had to figure out how to fund those and make sure they were funded. I was a little nervous when I got here because those projects weren't budgeted. And I was worried, where am I going to get those dollars if they weren't actually amended in, in a budget to be able to, to work with those dollars? We left a million dollars on the table at city center from that project that we could have got from FDOT and we would have had a million, additional million dollars for transportation. So roofs, I came in here and I was told the first week, every roof needs replacing. Okay, I can't do them all at one time, but, but we're, what we put a plan in place, we're doing two now. We're going to come back to you with two more. I think we're going to have the roofs in, in pretty good shape where they need to be. I had an amphitheater, the top was off of it. And I was trying to figure out, how do we put in place to get the amphitheater fixed? I want to, we, we had an opportunity to get money from FEMA. This week as we speak, we're, we've been awarded that 300 and some thousand dollars from FEMA. We've worked through a lot of projects that, and Commissioner, I'm not, I'm not trying to, to pick on you, but I'm just trying to say, we've worked through a lot of projects that were started three years ago, but never funded, never started, and we've gotten all those accomplished. Those were big things that needed to get done. And I was hearing from everybody, get those projects done. Well, we've done that. And so I think, then I was hearing reserves. I want the reserves to be back up to 25%. We're there. So I think we've done a lot in two years. I know from what I've seen in our staff, we've done a lot. Have we done everything? No. Do I want to get there? Absolutely. Do we have things we're going to bring you in the next 12 months? Absolutely, to help. So I just want you to know that staff's working really, really hard because we've been dealt a lot of things. You know, we have publics going in, but we didn't have the infrastructure and the improvements out there before the publics came to the table. So we're trying to rush this through and trying to get, but get it right and get the right deal to get that done. So we've had a lot of, of capital and infrastructure improvements that needed to be done and we're catching up on those. And I think we've done it responsibly, not having to borrow money or, or what. And we've caught that up. And like I said, you're going to see in the next six months, the roofs will be done, will be caught up there. And so then that'll allow us some of those capital dollars and future budgets to be able to spend them in places where, where we need them. So, so it's just been tough. We just paid off Martin. That, I was, you know, I was struggling with the stiff payment because when you start taking away ad valorem dollars, those growth dollars that you use to pub, to fund public safety, we lose that. But, but thank goodness, we've paid off Martin Road and we will, we're using those 100 and 208,000 or whatever is in our general fund that we've been able to use to fund the things we're talking about in this budget. So I think we've done a lot. I want you to know we've done a lot. So, but we've been dealt a lot. There was a lie. I'm not going to sit here and tell you that we haven't, but we've closed these projects out. They've all, a lot of them started and we're finally closing those out. So now we can... So now we can, you know, move on with the concerns and projects you have. We're going to come back to you too and show you the vehicle. We're going to do a vehicle presentation to show you the vehicles. If you notice the last couple of years, we're not buying a lot of vehicles because we've purchased a lot of vehicles. The departments have told me that, hey, I got a truck there. I need to look at what I got. I need to see what I need before, and they've moved around a lot of their functions. So I want to come back. We're going to come back to you and show you our vehicles. So there's, we have, there's, it was a lot to catch up on. So, and I will tell you, as I stand here tonight, last couple of years, we've really caught a lot of projects up and been a lot of backlog. And those processes take a while. You have to bid, you have to, the process is, there's a lot of process. And so, but we've caught a lot of those up. And now, you know, we can kind of focus on the items that we've been talking about.
And I don't think COVID is an excuse. It's a reality this year. Before that, we were really on a good pace and we would have been able to fund a lot of these things. I don't think anybody's disagreeing with that. So the reality of that is where the funds are coming from is the people that are also affected and continuing to be affected. So that's where I'm trying to find this balance, what will keep us moving forward even in a challenging time. And at the same time, the people are also saying, I'm feeling this at home. So, and I mean, I know we might disagree a little bit there on, I think it's good that we're, to me, a benchmark, we should stay below Orange County for different reasons that I've talked to businesses, I've talked to different ones that say, why would I come in? We're trying to close these loopholes, these Swiss cheese pockets, you know. And I think that's something that'll help us be there. So I don't think it's that we can't touch this millage rate. We really are right now, even in a challenging time. I think it's how much and is this the year? That's the thing that I'm trying to find that balance because that's what I'm hearing from the people as well. So finding that balance, those are the two things that I'm hearing. They do want to see that improve, but they don't want to see too much this year. So that's just kind of, again, I want to come to a meeting of minds here so we can move forward.
And I like to keep it simple too. So if we, if we save, so 51 million is our general fund. So 25%, so we're roughly at 12.7 million bucks in our reserve balance, generally speaking.
That's kind of where we were at the end of 19.
Okay. And so we're about a million seven, call a million eight, down in terms of our intergovernmental revenue?
Yes, in the current year.
About that? Okay. So call it 11 million bucks that we would have in our, just scenario. Round numbers, 11 million bucks. 11 divided by 51, we would still be at 22% of our reserve, our general fund expenditure, assuming that we just paid for everything out of the reserve balance to pay for our shortage to make sure that we can do things that we needed to get done as a city. I'm just saying, that would be the worst case scenario. It's not terrible. I mean, the floor balance on the reserve balance is 16.67. It's two months worth of expenditures. 25% is three months. Okay? I just want to put it in simple terms, just so everybody's clear playing field about what we're really actually talking about. Because it's not this doom and gloom stuff that, I don't subscribe to that. Now, what the future holds, don't know.
Right.
You have to contemplate some risks there. You have to, I'll give you that. But I'm just saying, it's not like we're down five, $10 million here.
No. And I just want to point out, one thing that I'd like to point out and make clear is, it's also storm season. And so if it's 12 million, 11 million, but a storm comes through and we're going to need $2 or $3 million, we've seen this before, $2 or $3 million that we've got to take out of that to form, for the storm. And then we've got, you know, other issues come, then you're talking a reserve level that gets even lower. So, and you could have more than one storm, you could have another issue, you know. The rainy day funds are also for, if you had a problem with state dollars, you know. These state dollars, they give us this projection, but if they come back in December, I hope they don't, Mr. Smith, I hope you're right on where we are. But I hope they don't come back to me and I'm coming to you in December and saying, you need to adjust that 10% because we're seeing a difference in the last quarter.
And that's what I'm hearing, is they're going to go back like the week after session, I mean, week after the election and reduce our sales tax. So rumor, I don't know. But I can tell you that if you look at the parks, you know, they were at full capacity. Full capacity is 30%. And I can carry you, they're not coming on airplanes. They're driving here. So we're not getting, they're not getting hotel stays, we're not getting the food sales, not getting t-shirts and all that. So my bet is they're going to come back in December and tell us, we've got to whack our sales tax again. So if we're going to do, you know, I'm okay with, if we need to raise millage, I'd rather raise millage and not mess with any more than we've done with reserves. I think we're going to, I want to, I want to save them because the next two years are going, for me, are going to be, you know, turmoil, you know, amongst, you know, what we're going to be collecting, I think. But.
And of course, you were here when I brought that presentation, and that was less than other cities, similar to ours. And different municipalities have different sources of funding. But it was also something that was a flexible thing with a plan, which is when you came, having I pushed and said, I still want a policy, because I think it's just a good benchmark.
Sure.
And again, I'm comfortable with flexibility as long as there's a plan to restore it. But I do agree, there are extra risk factors that we're looking at right now between COVID and the storms. There were five key storms at one time, which is only the second time that we've seen that already lined up. So, and again, we may not have any more. That would be wonderful.
Be great.
But if we do, I'd rather stay on the safer side of that, just because I think there is extra risk because of this COVID thing, and there are some unknowns there. But other than that, again, there's a flexibility built in in my mindset as long as we say, okay, if we have to, we can touch it, but then let's bring it back.
Okay. We beating this dead horse enough?
Yes.
All right. Commissioner Becker, you want to make a motion? For, I need, or excuse me, I guess we need to, are we set, everybody, are we set on quarter mill? Is that, I know you've got some hesitations, and I do too, but I'd like to see us in a, you know, 4-0 vote, but I can, you know, we can take it whichever way you want to go. If we're all good with that, Susan, would you read the Resolution 2020-29, please, Mayor?
Resolution 2020-29, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, setting the millage levy for fiscal year 2020, 2021.
Okay. In accordance with the truth and millage trim requirements, the city must set the final millage rate and advise the property praiser of the final millage rate. The final millage rate is 4.2876, which represents an 11.92% increase over the rolled back rate, millage rate of 3.8309.
I would move to approve the 4.28.
Motion by Commissioner Becker.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Reluctantly, but again, I think there's reasonableness here. In the past, I've dug my heels in, but I think there is a reasonableness. I think we're working on positive goals. And so I will.
Okay. Motion carries unanimously. Next up, Resolution Number 2020-30.
Resolution Number 2020-30, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, adopting the annual budget for the general fund, special revenue funds, and enterprise funds for fiscal year 2020, 2021.
Okay. I look for a motion to adopt the annual budget as presented for the fiscal year 2020, 2021.
And do we have to put a thing where those dollars go to?
Yes, please. So in your motion, I need to make that the $455,000 or the additional, $455,000 will be out.
Streets and half?
Half streets and half.
Street repaving and half.
Mowing for.
I thought it was 240 and 215.
But it's fully into Streets Fund and then you're going to.
Yes. So it'll be, yes, so you'll make it as a transfer to the Streets Fund in the amount of $455,000.
Okay.
And then, yes. So do it that way. And then if we have to do any budget amendments, we can do that after. But the full amount will transfer into the Streets Fund, the 455 will transfer into the Streets Fund. So.
So I would move to accept the budget with the additional ad valorem between the 4.16 to the 4.28, where that, or 450,000 as presented, be moved to the Streets Fund and adopted.
Okay, got it. Motion by Commissioner Becker.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, that ends the budget meeting. Do you all want to take five or do you want to just roll?
I'm good either way.
Okay.
I mean, if you want to keep rolling.
No, we're good. We'll take five, just five.